This conference will now be recorded.
I hate that. All right, everyone. Welcome back to the city council meeting. Thank you for waiting, those who did. That brings us to presentations. We have none. Next, public comments. This is the first public comment period of the meeting. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to provide public comment, now is your opportunity to do so. You'll be given three minutes. Please start by stating your name and address. Again, public comment period number one. Going once, going twice, gone. No public hearings, no proclamations, no old business. That brings us to new business. New business wastewater treatment plant contract termination. Let me find that here.
No problem.
Second. We have a motion and a second to authorize the mayor to review and approve the wastewater contract termination agreement. We currently have a contract with Water and Wastewater Services that would have lasted through the next couple of years. In discussions with Water and Wastewater Services, they have agreed to work with us and we have a mutually agreed upon termination agreement for the contract. We're asking council to approve the mayor and signing this amendment to the agreement. We have a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say that it's been 10 years. They've done a really good job with us. It's just time that, time that we stand on our own two feet and we have the ability to do it starting this year. That's why we're doing this.
I couldn't agree more. I think this is, this is a proud moment for Tenino and its human waste. Is there any, any other comments?
$30,000 is a lot to save.
Yeah, we're paying, we're paying less and we're getting more and we're able to, we're able to take care of it on our own. So this is, this is good. All right, no further comments. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next is Quarry House renovation project contract award recommendation. For this agenda item, I would like to introduce the city engineer, Mr. Mike Marshall.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, Mike Marshall Gibson Olsen. So we advertised for the Tenino Quarry House renovation. February 15th and it was a pretty fast turnaround. Opened on last Wednesday, 1:00 PM. We got three bids and they range from $278,186 to $388,513, including tax. So in constructing, because during the city hall, did bid it, but they were the, the second low. They were in the middle. So the low was grit city contracting for $278,186.40 and their bid was filled out correctly. It is responsive. And I checked with their references. Those were all good. Checked the state website. That was clean and they are not on the, the SAM debarment list. And since it's CDBG funding, it is federal, so they can't be on that list, which they are not. So it was a, a low bid, which helps the city. We can get a lot more done for what their prices are. So with that, I recommend that the city award the contract to grit city contracting and allow the mayor to sign the notice of award and subsequently the agreement, once we get that done, after we get the bonds and insurance back.
So we're asking for council to make a motion to award the contract to, for the Tenino Quarry House renovation to grit city contracting and allow the mayor or authorize the mayor to sign the award agreement.
No problem.
Second.
Moved and seconded to make the motion as stated. Is there any discussion? Are there any questions for the city engineer?
Well, I guess I'm, I'd like to ram it home that you're also authorized to enter in the agreement, into the agreement after we get the bonds and insurance back.
Okay. Is that clear to the motion maker?
Yes.
Okay, is that clear to the second?
Yes.
Okay. I, I want to thank Mike for putting this, the bid package together. I think it's, it's really interesting to note that when the, what the bid, what the bid conference, what's the term?
The pre-bid conference.
The pre-bid conference occurred, there was something around a dozen contractors that showed up to, that were interested in the Quarry House project, which it's, it's like, it's, it's like rolling the dice because when we, you know, we've done other contracts, well, we fought for, what, like two years to get bids on the Quarry Pool. So it's, it's, it's a weird game, but I appreciate Mike and, and your stewardship on these projects.
Great. Thank you.
Call for the question. All those in favor? John, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to say to Mike, because she's been here as long as I have, I think a little bit longer through, through the decades. I like being able to say that. Mike's done a really good job for us. He's earned at least my trust and he should earn everybody else's as well. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Congratulations. We'll get moving on that. Wastewater treatment plant operator position. So this is a contract with an individual, so we would need the council to authorize the mayor to sign into the contract. We, we have given opportunity for council to review it. We discussed it in the work session and we've had it reviewed by the city attorney. At this time, we are asking the council to authorize the signature of the contract and we'd like to get moving forward on this.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I think we talked about it quite a bit in the work session. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That brings us to interlocal agreement code enforcement, City of Rainier. Again, this was a topic of discussion in the work session. You heard from our code enforcement officer and the city attorney has reviewed the interlocal agreement. We've also had one that is essentially the same ILA that we've been using with the city of BuCota to provide services for water specialists. So we're comfortable with the ILA. We believe that we have the ability to provide the service and, and, and we're happy to present this to the council.
No problem.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the mayor to sign the ILA. We, this of course, has been sent over to Rainier and I believe they're reviewing it with their council tonight. So barring any changes, I would, if they're comfortable with this, we would be signing it if the council authorized. If Rainier can, comes back with any suggested changes, I of course would bring the contract or the ILA back before the council for review. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We have no resolutions. Ordinance 923 amending ordinance 904 on the arch commission, chapter 2.70 arch commission. Recommended review and motion to adopt this as the second reading and adoption of ordinance 904.
No problem.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to accept this as the second reading and adoption for ordinance 923, an ordinance of the city of Tenino, Washington, amending chapter 2.70 arts and culture and history commission. And again, the changes were very minimal. We wanted to, we removed a, a description of a volunteer position as a clerk because we will be fielding the arch commission's clerical work through our staff. And I believe that was the only change. So if there's no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion pass, ordinance adopted. Thank you. It's all yours, George, now. And it's all yours again. Chamber of Commerce, Mr. George Sharp.
So our next meeting will be next Wednesday and we have Andrew Schiefen from the fire department coming to give us an update on the levee and how they're moving forward. And we had our second Oregon Trail Days meeting on Monday night, last night, and moving forward with that being the fourth weekend in July.
Excellent. EDC?
They don't meet for two weeks.
Experience Olympia, Fire District 12, Commissioner O'Callahan. Put on your commissioner hat.
We have our meeting on Thursday and ours have been live for quite some time, but we do, we also do a hybrid.
Okay. Linda from the library. Librarian Linda, you have the floor.
Okay. Oops, did I turn off my webcam while I got my muted too close together there? Or, oh yeah, there we go. Okay. So I just want to say hello. Just no big updates to the library. I just wanted to let everybody know about two features on our website. One is that our early learning page has just been redone and updated. It's terrific. It has a lot of excellent information in it. So if you're interested in finding resources for kids birth through kindergarten, that's the place to go with a new great look and it's just, it's under the kids and teens tab on our website, trl.org. And the other thing that's a little bit more timely perhaps is we have a new reference database called Press Reader and it gives access to 7,000 newspapers and magazines from 120 countries in 60 languages and you can instantly translate into 19 different languages. So I was given current events. I was looking for Ukrainian newspapers and also Russian newspapers. And unfortunately, there's quite a lag time on those back into 2021. So I couldn't see anything about the, the war there, but I did go to some German newspapers and they were covering the war. So it's, you know, it will give some really interesting perspectives on different things happening around the world and will be great for research as well. So that is under the learn tab under reference databases, Press Reader. So I just wanted to let you know, a new resource to explore.
Awesome. Thank you, Linda. Museum. It's Jessica.
Hello. Well, I'm happy to report that we are finally going to have a meeting on March 21st at 7 o'clock. There's numerous things going on at the museum right now, but I want to highlight something that we are thinking about doing and that is a railroad day possibly in September while the weather still holds out. And it would be basically celebrating 150 years of railroading in Tenino. And we could also use it as an opportunity to ribbon cutting on the caboose. Dawn thinks it will be ready to go. And we'll be getting our railroad exhibits up to snuff, maybe invite some other groups like Burlington Northern and Operation Lifesaver and maybe some hobbyist model railroad people in to have some booths and have some hands-on activities for kids to do and just kind of do a whole railroad themed day. But we'll be talking about a date for that, a definitive date at the next historical society meeting. So that's pretty much all I've got.
Has Dawn attended any of those meetings?
He has attended a couple. So mostly, yeah, I go out and talk to him pretty often.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
I'm thinking maybe you and I and him should sit down and talk and.
That would be good.
All right. Anything else with the museum?
No, there's always stuff, but those, that's the big thing really right now.
Okay. Rainey, do you have any comments on, so we're, you know, we're going to be doing some repairs to the museum. Do we know what, what, what's going on there with the timeline and?
And one thing also, I did contact the grant, contact I have, and she said they were just running behind on the grants. So, because I was getting nervous.
I haven't seen an award letter, but I can't imagine we won't be awarded.
Yeah, no, I, I think, I think that's not the problem. It's just they're running behind this year.
Okay. I think Rainey must have gone to the refrigerator or something. All right. Tenino Community Service Center, everyone's favorite, Jody. Where is she?
So can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, we've got a few things going on. The Robin Rudy Run is on the 26th. We're going to have an after bingo party at the Eagles. So everybody come in and play some bingo.
What, the 26th of March or April?
Yes, sorry, March.
Okay.
March. Okay. Um, we are in talks right now to send 10 kids to camp this year. So maybe those kids get to go to camp. So we can start, we will have some announcements for that as soon as we, we have all that finalized. Cameras, we are getting ready to put in a camera system at the food bank. So, uh, yeah, it's a needed thing. They gotta stop coming over the top of the fence. That's all I gotta say.
Oh my gosh.
Yeah, you don't, yeah, I can't say what I said.
Yeah.
Um, we have high school kids right now. There's a set of four of them, three to four, that will be delivering to the senior apartments once a month. They will always be with somebody from the food bank. They're helping us out again. This is a great thing. They're coming out of the leadership class. So if anybody sees kids out there dropping, dropping food off, that's what they're doing. Trying to help, trying to help our seniors.
That's great.
So that's all, that's all we have for right now. We've, we've got some face lifting happening at the food bank. So you're going to see quite a few of the guys coming in going, trying to get some more things done.
Okay, thank you, Jody. First commission. Mr. George.
So we hope to schedule a meeting now that we have that done in April.
Okay, excellent. Civil Service Facade Improvement Grant Review Committee.
My last day at work is the 15th and then I'm going to schedule a meeting and we'll go from there.
Awesome. Finance Committee, Planning Commission, Public Safety Chief of Police.
So we've got quite a few things going on right now. I don't know if everyone's aware, but we might be losing Officer Garcia to Yelm. I think tomorrow I'm gonna get final notification that she's been given a conditional letter of offer. So we'll probably only have her for a couple more weeks. The good news is, is I'll know tomorrow whether or not the person that we have in background investigations has made it through the process. I fully expect that he will and he'll be coming to us as a lateral and it'll be a direct replacement for Officer Garcia. So scheduling is going to be a little tight at the PD for the next eight weeks or longer because I'm going to be assuming a patrol schedule until our new transfer, lateral transfer is up and ready to work on his own. So it's Officer Johnson is still in the academy. He's doing fantastic. He had firearms this week. He's passed all of his tests with over 90%. I've been working really hard with Mr. Endicott at the schools and secured $50,000 a year to fund a school resource officer position or we fund a position. To put that into comparison, we've had a contract that was, I think, signed in or an agreement that was signed in 2017 for $18,000 and we'd been operating on that. So we got quite a bump in that. I've been in talks and with the mayor a little bit and trying to crunch our numbers. Hopefully we can backfill and add one more to the patrol schedule, which would bring three in patrol with a full, with a school resource officer funded at over 60%. Also been looking at some creative scheduling ideas to increase coverage and plan for some of the development that's going on in the area. Been looking at a firefighter schedule. I just need to find a firefighter now that I can bounce ideas off of. Anyone knows one? Think Mr. Mayor's a good resource there. And that's all we've got. I work on, we're trying to get one more patrol car from the tribe and hopefully that's something I can work out with them and get it for a great deal. So everyone has a car.
All right. Thank you, sir. Director Public Works, it is the son's 22nd birthday today. So they're Fujiyama enjoying the delights of the Fujiyama Steakhouse in the west side of Olympia. But our big stuff with Public Works is dealing with the wastewater treatment plant. We also, we budgeted for an additional pickup truck for the Public Works Director. This would be something smaller than the last couple of ones that we bought where they had the big utility box on it. We put $40,000 in the 2022 budget to purchase, well, we were, we were looking at some Ford Rangers. Unfortunately, to purchase a Ford Ranger, now it would be like a year out, but they have several F-150s and they're within our price range. I think they were even actually, actually a little less than the Rangers oddly. But it would just be a straight pickup, but no crew cab, no utility boxes, no nothing. It was, it's just the supervisor's vehicle and we may be picking that up tomorrow or this week. So, and that's already in the budget. So you might see a new vehicle driving around town. City Planner, not present. Code Enforcement Building Inspector. Can't hear you, Rainey.
Not here.
I don't know what's going on, bud. We can't, can you hear me?
There he is.
No. Rainey, can you hear me? I hate this. All right, we're moving on. If you could chime in at any point, we'll let you talk. City Code Enforcement, Mayor, me. I've been busy dealing with, you know, various city hall issues. Of course, things are going well for the most part. The, the city hall building construction is 99.9% complete. We finished the front office flooring this last week and we're starting to move desks back into the front office. So that's really exciting and it's, it's gonna, it's gonna look real good. Upstairs is nearly done. As you learned from the discussion earlier with city engineer, we held the pre-bid conferences for the Quarry House. We had several, several interested parties and we received three bids and council approved the low bid tonight. So we're excited to get moving on that. We anticipate construction on Quarry Pool to start at any moment. We're waiting for ORCA to roll in with their staff. There's some other big news coming down the pipeline that I'm not ready to announce yet, but things are going well in some of our, I don't want to give too much up, but I'll, I'll have a big announcement for you guys very soon. Met with the stone cutters. So met with Keith Phillips and Dan and the rest of the crew. And I've been talking to them about how to get them set up as a nonprofit. They have been linked up with the Park Foundation and they are now under the umbrella of the Park Foundation and have all the rights and privileges of a registered nonprofit agency. They are actually establishing themselves as an organization with officers and the, the goal is to ramp up the, the Tenino Stone Cutter legacy. And they really feel like they can become a viable industry again. And, and I believe it. They've got some great talent. They have, they're getting contracts, more contracts for work than they can keep up with. So they're really taking seriously, bringing in new students and new, new understudies. Keith is taking on kind of the role of the godfather as he has some people under him that are very skilled artisans and artists. We are, we have moved ahead with the old Public Works building. If you look at the right side of it, it's completely renovated. So this, this is exciting. This, the old Public Works building was, it was essentially ready to be demolished. There were a lot of people that were saying that we just need to tear it down. But through working with partners in our community, a private business and now a nonprofit, we have, they, we have restored half of the building, brand new concrete, all new floors, new insulation, new roof. And that was all done through volunteer labor with the private business that is going to be leasing it out from us. It, I mean, it looks beautiful inside. And then the stone cutters, hopefully will be, will be bringing forward a contract for council to review where we would go into similar processes with the stone carvers where they would, they would be doing through volunteer labor, renovating the building. And then we would in exchange provide them, we would operate as their landlord and they would have a new home where they could do, they could expand their, their operations in the community, take on new jobs, take on new students and, and be a, be a true industry again. And it's real exciting, really, really exciting. And so I've been working with them on that. So look forward to hear, or look forward to provide more information on that for you guys. Any questions? Be that, Jason?
No report. Their next meeting isn't until the 21st of this month.
Solid Waste Advisory Board.
Yes. I had a meeting last Wednesday, I believe it was. Um, part of that meeting was the mandatory training, much like AWSC. It was by Jane Futterman from the Deputy Prosecuting Attorney's Office. And then in the other business, they're doing a study to get more plastics out of trash and into recycling. They're looking into making Rochester from a drop box to a transfer station because it's taking so long for the trucks to go dump and return to the routes. And that would be closer for them as far as South Thurston County would go. The April meeting was changed from the 6th to the 13th, I believe it was, because of spring break. And Republic Service, which is doing the plastic recycling. And they are in the process of building a plant in Las Vegas, hopefully to be open in early 2023.
Thank you, Elaine. South Thurston Economic Development Initiative, Mr. George.
Our next meeting is going to be next Friday, the 18th, and we're looking at doing it on the Skali, at the Skali Tribe to give an update on the tribe and what's happening there. And we'll also have a representative from the Washington State Department of Commerce to be there to talk about all the new programs that are coming out of the state budget right now.
Excellent. Is that live, George?
Yeah, live is the goal.
Well.
We'll find out tomorrow to confirm.
Tenino School Board, Ms. Rachel.
Well, with spring sports underway and we're kind of at the last few months of school and with the mask mandates lifting, I took a lot of notes and I realized that I'll be here talking for the next 15 minutes. So I'm encouraging everyone to go look on the school's website. There's a lot of really neat things, really fun things happening with the mask mandate lifting. There's some normalcies coming back and all of our senior announcements where they're going, where their future's starting. Those are starting to come through. So yeah, if you guys have a chance, look at the, look at the websites or their Facebook page too, and it has everything listed on there. And then also just wanted to remind all the parents on here that it is early release tomorrow. So don't get your kids late. It got, it got kind of lost for me in the shuffle with the emails, with the mandates and everything. So I just discovered tonight that tomorrow is early release. So, but yes, please look at the website because our kids are doing amazing things. The school's doing amazing things. So But yes, please look at the website, because our kids are doing amazing things, the school's doing amazing things, so check it out if you can.
Awesome. Thank you, TRPC.
TRPC, I'll send you the, the after meeting, after meeting minutes as soon as I get them. But otherwise, you know, it was just going through all the different things, why we do this, why we do that.
Okay, TPB.
That's tomorrow morning, and again, as soon as they get me the after meeting minutes, I get them to you as well.
Legislature.
Well, we have some exciting things going on, hopefully, it's gonna be all right, we have they dropped the House Capitol budget, they did a striking amendment on the Senate budget, and they included five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for our playground. So hopefully, the Senate will concur in the amendment and and we'll get the money.
That'll be one more playground.
Yeah, that was my big announcement that I wasn't going to share, that was saved for Linda. So, yes, we are looking good so far, we're on the final stretch, but we're not quite, and, you know, we're not quite there yet.
We'll know in the next two days, we'll know by Thursday or Friday anyway, so. And I'll let everybody know as soon as I do.
Things are looking good, so, you know, the fixing the playground has been an ongoing issue, right, you know, so the playground was destroyed in, what, like a year ago in a storm, and are not fixing it, we have all the parts. We have not completed fixing it, because when we fix it, we also want to move it out of harms way and out of, and so it is not like submerged fifty percent of the year, where it's at, the location's bad. So we have been holding off on fixing it so we can fix it with, we can fix it kind of with some finality and with, and kind of with some bigger, with a bigger picture. If we are awarded the five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, we will completely revamp our playground in the park. And, and, and we would be able to do a tremendous amount of work, putting in new playground toys, potentially some fitness equipment for parents that are there, including our, our pump track into like a larger picture, and really, really create a play area that would be, that would rival anywhere in the state, and half a million dollars is a lot for, for playground equipment. So we, we shot big, we asked for eight hundred thousand, which we probably would have been able to build like a, maybe like a SpaceX rocket or something. But we, it sounds like we're going to come in with at about five hundred thousand, which is phenomenal. So with that, with the quarry house renovations, with the quarry pool renovations, the fixing up the museum, we will have put, you know, I, I'm, I don't know, around a little over a million, one point two million into our park in twenty twenty two, if everything goes well. And that's, that's pretty crazy for Tonino, we, we should all be very happy with that and patting ourselves on the back, and our community is going to be like, they're going to, they're going to really appreciate what we're creating, so this is going to be a big deal for Tonino and for the city council and for the region, because we are, we are the park for South Thurston County and North Lewis County. There's no other outdoor recreation facilities like we have in the region, it's, it's pretty awesome, and we're going to really make it shine, so. Thank you, Linda, thank you, Jen, for filling out the, the paper, the request. And we'll have, we'll have a lot of things to give to Ed Orka, Peter Borno, and Senator, Senator Braun, if this all gets passed, so we'll, we'll send out some thank you cards.
Actually, I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, because you're the one that's been spearheading this thing and, and making sure that everybody knows what we need down here, thank you.
Thank you. All right, public comment period number two, if there's anyone else, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to provide public comment, this is your opportunity to do so, you'll be given three minutes, state your name and address. Hearing none, going once, going twice, moving on, that brings us to announcements. My, something we've been neglecting is to, to fill our finance committee. This has been lingering, and we, we haven't really gotten it, got it on the agenda, but I would like for council to think about if they would like to participate in our finance committee. We would need three members, you meet when you decide, but you would meet typically quarterly. I'm hoping that Elaine would be interested, because I understand she has some background in accounting, and she would be a welcome addition to our finance committee. So if you are interested, you don't need to tell me now, but please send me an email or Jen an email, and we will, if everybody, if everybody sends us one, then we'll figure it out, but if we get three interested parties, then we'll, we'll know who, who wants to do it. And then we will, we'll help you set up some meetings. So that is my announcement, any further announcements? Council member O'Callahan?
September tenth. First responder public barbecue.
Yes, it is, all right. Thank you, everyone, for coming, great meeting, biggest agenda we've had in a while, we got a lot done tonight, really happy with it, thank you, meeting adjourned.
On the table, Martian.
Good night.
Good night.